Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the July 16, 2014 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. Would you join us for a moment of silence, please?[16.73][16.73](APPLAUSE). Thank you. There are no changes to the agenda.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We have June 18 minutes.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption. The June 18 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. I do believe we have a few meetings to report. The Sanitation Authority?
Yes, ma'am. We met last night. Our total water base for customers is 14,124. Sanitary is 13,639. June's rainfall was 2.2 and 1/2 inches. Previously, it was 5.1. Our average is still running about 3.26 per month, and we're right on target. I think we're actually a little bit ahead. Deal Plant, we pulled 2.9 million gallons per day out. I said to Stevenson and Anderson Plant, we poured 1.7 billion gallons per day out. We purchased 1.36 million gallons per day from the city. Our daily average was 5.95, and that's as high as I can remember it. That's almost 6 million gallons a day. I can't remember if we used that much water before, but maybe we have. The Deal Plant dropped about 2 feet last month, but it's still in real good shape. The Anderson Plant stayed almost exactly the same. At the -- oh, and as far as our water loss, last month, we were at 18 percent. They have found a few leaks, and now we're still running about 17 percent. They even proved it some, but they've still got some leaks in the system someplace. UVA gave a report on Stevens City and some of the problems we're having in Frederic Town, the Pines, about some of the basements flooding and the reason they're doing it. And basically, it's just old water lines, our old sewer lines, and water's infiltrating into the manholes, into some of the pipes. We're getting a lot of water from Stevens City when they have real bad lines up there, and we're getting a lot of infiltration there. And this stuff's just gotta be fixed, and it's gonna take a lot of time. And they gave a lot of ideas on how to fix it, and they were really good ideas, but they gotta do a lot of research now to find out where the bad places are and what's gotta be done to fix the problems in Stevens City. So they are working on that very hard, and hopefully we'll get some kind of solution out of this thing in the near future. And that's all we have.
Thank you very much. I don't believe that we have our representative from the city, but I will share with you that the Southern Frederick Land Use Plan Group, the working group, the folks that have been working on this along with some visitors and interested parties, had a meeting on August 1, and it's moving along so that on August 12, the Planning Commission will have a work session with the Board of Supervisors on the subject, and that's one step further. Mr. Hess, anything from the --
Yes, ma'am. Since the Planning Commission last met on June 18, the Board of Supervisors met on both June 25 and July 9. Five Planning Commission items were considered at the June 25 meeting. First was the -- first, the Board approved the revisions to the input for the Development Impact Model. Second, they held a public hearing on amending the Comp Plan to include additional language regarding the UDA Centers. And although there appeared to me to be general recognition of the diligent work of staff and the Planning Commission, on a split vote, the Board declined to approve these, this amendment at this time. Next, on a split vote, the Board approved the conditional use permit for the kennel on Laurel Grove. Then, following discussion, voted to move forward to public hearing the expansion of the Swazza to the property north of Lord Fairfax Community College, with the understanding that the Frederick County Sanitation Authority would be the provider of service for that area. And finally, agreed to move forward for public hearing the McCann-Slaughter property amendments to the Comp Plan. Then, on the meeting on July 9, first was the public hearing on amendment, on amending the county code to remove the requirement that our five communities must be age-restricted to qualify for private roads. To me, the Supervisors seemed pleased with the Planning Commission adding the requirement of specific VDOT standards, and the amendment was approved on a split vote. Next was the public hearing on reducing the setback requirements for multifamily residential buildings. On a split vote, the reduction was not approved. Then, the Board received Planning Commission reports on the master development plans for Madison Village, Clearbrook Business Center, and Snowdon Bridge Station with few comments or questions. And finally, the Board discussed expanding the Swazza to the future high school site off Route 522 and approved moving it forward for public hearing. And Madam Chairman, I'd just like to add my own comments to this. I would guess that there are sometimes some questions in the minds of members of the Planning Commission as to why the Board does not approve some items that have been sent forward by the Planning Commission with a recommendation for approval. And I'd just like to say that I personally see it as an indication of a government process that works in that in addition to -- that additional information and additional perspectives are gained at every step, and I would hope that the citizens of the county are well-served by that process.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Did I miss anybody? I don't think so. I'd like to let all of us be aware that Mr. Dunlap from the Redbud District is a new certified planning commissioner through the organization that we've gone through, most of us, except for those people most experienced. And so we -- thank you, Chuck, and we enjoy having you on the commission. Sorry, Roger. Okay. Now is the time when we ask for citizen comments on anything that is not a public hearing. Anybody? No kidding. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'll need to recuse myself from the first public hearing item.
All righty. Thank you, sir. This is a comprehensive plan amendment. It's the McCann-Slaughter Properties, and it's a proposed amendment to the Northeast Frederick Land Use Plan contained within Appendix 1 of the 2030 Comp Plan. The McCann-Slaughter parcels contain approximately 160 acres near the intersection of Martinsburg Pike and Old Charleston Road on both sides of McCann Road and adjacent to the CSX Railroad. The property's identified identification numbers are 44-A40 and 44-A25B in the Stonewall Magisterial District. I think I'll cease right here and let Mr. Ruddy take off.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, on the screen to your left, and as part of your agenda is, of course, the location map, which identifies the properties that the chairman just mentioned, outlined in black. Of course, they are to the east of Route 11 and just south of Old Charleston Road. And again, those are the properties known as the McCann-Slaughter Properties. As you can see, they're identified presently with a DSA developmentally sensitive area. On the northern portion, Route 37 runs through the southern portion of the property, and of course, the bottom area is already identified for industrial future land uses. Gives you some orientation as to the location and the current land uses. And of course, the request that came in front of us, as passed by resolution, the Board of Supervisors onto the Planning Commission, was one to evaluate the land uses on this property and come up with an appropriate solution if it was deemed to be so. So the Comprehensive Plan and Programs Committee and the Planning Commission had a little bit of discussion, as did the Board, but predominantly, the Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee proposed an amendment that is in front of you this evening, which sought to be a balanced approach to amending the Northeast Land Use Plan in this area, an approach that balanced the request for OM future land uses, the developmentally sensitive areas that were, of course, environmental and historical on this site, and a variety of other factors. So what is presented to you is hopefully a balanced approach to this request and a change to the Northeast Land Use Plan and this location. So on the screen to your left is the proposed update to the Northeast Land Use Plan, and of course, it identifies the very same property with a combination of OM land use designation. And I'll briefly highlight that here, if I may. So of course, the OM designation is in this general location here on that portion of the property. And of course, that's the area to north of Route 37, future Route 37, and the area to the west of the existing railroad. And as you can see from that, that leaves the balance of the property to the north and to the northwest with a DSA developmentally sensitive area land use designation. Of course, that's where the environmental features are located. In addition, that's where the area of Stevenson's Depot from the County's Battlefield Network Plan was identified as the primary area, again, in the northern part of the property as it heads from, or Charleston Road, if you will, to the Melbourne Road corridor. The text that is proposed, as we've discussed before, hits on a couple of items, important items, that reinforces what the land use plan shows, and that's that shows protection of the environmental features on the site, preservation of those areas identified with a developmentally sensitive area, and with development being limited to those areas south of the developmentally sensitive area and south of McCann's Road. Again, the text reinforces an OM mixed-use office land use designation. In addition, McCann's Road and the other historical features ought to be preserved and hopefully utilized in some manner that can, whether that's through pedestrian accommodations, trail connections, and general preservation, can enhance the historical context connections in that area in conjunction with the development that's proposed. And with regards to access, we know that we've had a lot of discussions on access throughout this process with VDOT and the applicant, and access is identified as to be provided with a new north-south road that generally is parallel to the west side of the existing railroad. No access would be permitted to McCann's Lane, of course, because, as we mentioned, that's part of the future trail network. But I point out that road access because we've always recognized through this discussion that we wanted it to be parallel to the west side of the existing railroad. Through our ongoing discussions with the applicant and with VDOT, an alternative approach was evaluated, and that is to use the road providing access to this site as a divider between the developmentally sensitive areas and the future development OM. And to illustrate that, if you will, the land use plan that has kind of been circulated at this point includes the road to the north and south, again, to the west of the property. As we talked about with that discussion with the Board of Supervisors, the VDOT discussion was ongoing, but as shown here on the screen to your left, of course, you can see that the proposed road providing access to all of this area would again be moved to the west to provide that boundary between the DSA and the OM. So this seems to be a favorable approach to that proposed access to the various parts of the site. So I felt important to point out that, again, we've continued through, as this has gone on, continue with those discussions, and the access, as shown on the screen here to your left, would be one that's suitable to all parties, it would appear, and particularly There has been some additional text included, which is a result of the Comp Plan Committee members meeting with HRAB members, which talks about buffer zones, historical signage, interpretive, wayside parking, and a small area of commercial land use. That's all included in the text. I just thought I'd point that out again. And again, at this point, we're here and we're seeking, following a public hearing, of course, a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors on the proposed amendment.
Questions of Mr. Ruddy? Any questions? Would you help me, the highway, the highway to, or excuse me, the road that --
Yes.
Yes, thank you. That came forth from VDOT?
Yes, during the discussion after the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, the discussions were ongoing. The applicant had actually met with VDOT to determine access to the site after all of the discussions had started, and there were some concerns expressed at that time about the road, as if it were to continue all the way to the south, carrying additional traffic onto Snowdon Bridge Boulevard at the southern location. So that initiated the opportunity, if you will, for staff and VDOT to sit down and to relay that to the applicant and for the applicant to relay that back to staff and get to where we are today.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Thank you. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to us regarding this proposal? Change in our comprehensive plan. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, thoughts, expressions, voices?
Madam Chairman?
Sir?
I'd like to recommend approval of the draft amendment to the 2030 Comprehensive Plan Appendix 1 Northeast Frederick Land Use Plan.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to recommend approval of the amendment of the McCann-Slaughter Properties. Any other comments? All righty, well, let's vote. How about Mr. Unger starting us off?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Prockett, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Malden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Moon, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on August 13. Our next item is also a public hearing item. It's, again, a comprehensive plan amendment, and it's the Lord Fairfax Community College Middletown Sewer and Water Service Area and its future expansion area. This follows on from a recently approved Swazza, which created 138 acres in the area surrounding and including the Lord Fairfax Community College. The proposed future expansion sites previously identified as Phase II includes an additional 100 acres of business development land uses in support of the college and an expansion of the Middletown-Lord Fairfax Swazza to be served by the Frederick County Sanitation Authority. The property is identified by 84-A-78 in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Mr. Ruddy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is a request to amend the comprehensive plan, as noted, that has been around and follows on one that was thoroughly studied down around the Lord Fairfax Community College area. On the screen to your left is the land use plan, if you will, as proposed, which shows the location of the area for business development uses in support of the community college. Of course, there is text associated with this expansion area, and as we know, that the text recognizes that with the approval of this land use plan, we're also approving the sewer and water service area around the property. Of course, the sewer and water service area, as with any sewer and water service area in Frederick County, is the area in which the County Board of Supervisors has authorized the provision of water and sewer, in this case, of course, by the Frederick County Sanitation Authority. The initial discussions on this project identified the city of Winchester and the town of Middletown providing those services. The direction we received very clearly from the Board of Supervisors was to make sure that the Frederick County Sanitation Authority would be the party ultimately responsible for providing water and sewer within the county's sewer and water service area. So you'll see that I've noted in the text that change, and really, that's the only thing, the only clarification that is part of this amendment that we haven't seen before. Again, we received clear direction about that. Again, it's about 100 acres business development land uses with an OM designation, no residential land uses, and again, the whole goal of this one is to provide land use opportunity in support of the community college and its ongoing growth. As with this and as with the previous one and the next one, what we're seeking is, of course, is the Planning Commission's recommendation to the Board of Supervisors following the public hearing. Be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Ruddy, yes, Mr. Oats?
Comment about sanitation authority serving it? I guess they'd have to buy or purchase the water and sewer from the city of Winchester and Middletown and then sell it to the applicant. What happens if Middletown or the city decides not to sell Frederick Sanitation Authority? Are they gonna be forced to build water and sewer lines to that area?
I believe that is part of the discussion that is going to have to occur. Frederick County Sanitation Authority has that role and responsibility to provide water and sewer within Frederick County. Obviously, those discussions, whether they can provide that service or not, or whether they need to be a conduit or a gatekeeper for that, I believe that that direction will be received through their communication with the Board of Supervisors and the Sanitation Authority Board.
So we're not backing them into a corner where they may have to do a multimillion-dollar project around a water and sewer line down there?
I don't believe that's the case. I think we're reinforcing what is the sewer and water service area policy of the county's comprehensive plan, and reinforcing the role of the sanitation authority as the entity that looks after that for county residents, business owners. There's a variety of different ways how that can be achieved, but I truly believe that that's beyond the realm or out of the scope of, if you will, this comprehensive plan discussion, and it's certainly something that is appropriate between the Sanitation Authority Board and ultimately, the Board of Supervisors.
Aye.
Yes. Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Ruddy, in Appendix 1, Area Plans, Middletown-Lord Fairfax Swazza, fifth paragraph down. Middle part of the paragraph was deleted and probably the last sentence was added. We, I think to make it clear, maybe the whole paragraph ought to be rewritten, because the first sentence essentially says that the FCSA expressed they have no desire to serve this area of Frederick County. Nothing would preclude them from knowing in the future, however. The last sentence says the Board is approving this update to the area plan expressly stating that FCSA will be the responsible party for providing water. So it doesn't seem that they have the option in the last paragraph, or the last sentence, but the first sentence says they have the option and can choose to or not choose to. So I think maybe just for clarity, those two sentences should be maybe melded together, and the first sentence maybe isn't even needed anymore.
Good point. That was, the first sentence, of course, was in there to identify the chronology and really the chronology, which may be redundant at this point and confusing, so we could certainly wordsmith those, that paragraph, the fifth paragraph, a little better.
Yeah, I agree. It sounds like we're dragging the sanitation authority kicking and screaming into this.
And we might be, but...
Other questions of Mr. Ruddy? Yes, Mr. Unger?
Just a comment, I guess. Now, I read this over, too, and I'm glad the questions are being asked down through the line, because I didn't understand it either. I know Middletown's got a fairly new sanitation system, and I'm sure they need to put more businesses and more people into it to pay for it, but Frederick County Sanitation does not own that, nor do we have water up there. There's gotta be a lot of work done before any of this stuff can happen. I mean, I would think changing ownerships, we don't have any water up there. We're getting it off the city, and so therefore, the city's gonna supply the water at this point unless we dig wells, and that's probably not the best idea. So I'm glad that you guys saw it the same way I did. I didn't understand that either. We have no sewer lines up there, and we don't have any water up there, so take it over's gonna be tough. And as far as Gary said, bringing it back toward Stevens City, I don't think that's even an option. We have problems down there now trying to get it to the plants without flooding other areas, so I can't see that happening.
Anyone else?
Public hearing.
So much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to us regarding this change in the Comp Plan? Anyone? No one, we will close the public hearing. Let's see, this is in Back Creek.
If everybody's okay with it, I'll make a recommend of approval, except for the fact that we have a lot of cleaning up to do before it's gonna get anywhere to me. I like the idea, but sewer and water does bother me a lot.
I'll second the motion, I think.
Is that a motion?
I'd just say it's good, but it's, there needs to be a lot of work done to it. So I guess I am making a motion to approve it.
Aye.
Any other discussion? Okay. Mr. Moon?
Moon, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Kenny, yes. Malden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Prockett, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the chair votes yes. And this will go to the Board of Supervisors also on August 13. The next item is also a public hearing. It's also a Comp Plan Amendment, and it's the Reliance Road Sewer and Water Service Area Designations.
Madam Chair, I will need to recuse myself.
Thank you.
I'd like to finish.
Middletown, excuse me, designation, Middletown Properties LLC and Malden Properties. Middletown Properties owns approximately 41 acres at the Middletown exit off Interstate 81 east of the interchange and is identified with property identification numbers 91-A-56, 91-A-57, and 91-A-59 in the Opecan Magisterial District. Malden Properties has 90 acres to the east and is identified with property identification numbers 91-A-47, 91-A-47A, and 91-A-67 in the Opecan Magisterial District. Additional properties within the Reliance Road Study Area may be added to ensure a contiguous Swazza. Mr. Ruddy?
Thank you, Madam Jim, members of the commission. We're in the very similar areas to where we were before, and I think what you have in front of you further reinforces the sewer and water service area concept in the county. Again, that's the area in which sewer and water service can be provided, as approved by the Board of Supervisors and with the assistance of the Frederick County Sanitation During the discussion of the Middletown-Lord Fairfax Sewer and Water Service Area, the Board received two requests at the same time and felt it was appropriate to evaluate those through the discussion, but also include them through this public hearing process with a designation of sewer and water service area. So what we did was take that discussion and craft the amendment here in front of you, and that is to identify this as the Reliance Road Sewer and Water Service Area. As you're aware, the Reliance Road Study that was approved three or four years ago that was done in conjunction with the town of Middletown identified a study area boundary. It also identified a variety of different potential land uses in that area, predominantly commercial and OM. It also contained a statement there that sewer and water service to county properties would require Board of Supervisors approval. And in essence, that's why we are here today, to have the Board ultimately, through policy, approve the Reliance Road Sewer and Water Service Area. And so what we did here, in addition to taking the boundary that exists of the Reliance Road Study Area to include the Middletown Properties and the Malden Properties where the request came from, we included the whole boundary within the potential sewer and water service area. Obviously, the two property requests, which I'll just highlight here, the first one, of course, is immediately in the southeastern quadrant of the interchange with Interstate 81, and that's the Middletown Properties. Contains about 10 acres that is currently zoned commercial, and the existing exon is located there. And the second property, area of property, is, if you will, is on the eastern side of the study area, and those are the Malden Properties. So that gives you some understanding of where the properties are located and why we suggested that the sewer and water service area boundary include the whole study area. Now, we can pull back on that ultimately if the Board of Supervisors feels it's appropriate to do so, but we did through the discussion get the clear direction that it was okay to include the properties that were, for which we received the request, within the sewer and water service area, provided that sanitation authority were the ones that were responsible for providing that water and sewer service. So again, the request in front of you is a minor modification to the text of the Reliance Road Study. That minor modification states that the Board of Supervisors expressly recognizes that the Frederick County Sanitation Authority will be the party responsible for providing water and sewer service in this area. And of course, too, the map, the boundary of the map is designated as a sewer and water service area as opposed to just the study area boundary, and that's where we are this Be happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have. Be happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have. Of course, again, it's the text, and that's included, and we have the updated map. It's in your agenda on the screen there for illustration purposes.
Mr. Oates has a question?
Yeah, Mike, I don't have a problem with implementing the land use and the swazza, but again, we've got the Sanitation Authority. We don't even have a letter saying they can provide service. I'm saying you will, but yeah, it'd be nice to be at least had something from Sanitation Authority saying, well, yes, we can, and here's how we'll do it, or there's no way in the world we're going to do it for the next 40 years. You know, just something there to.
I think, you know, obviously, there's some ongoing discussion at different levels regarding that topic and the provision of service and the discussions that need to occur or have occurred with the town of Middletown and also the city of Winchester from the water perspective. So those discussions, if you will, have been happening to a certain degree. When we look at the policy, it really reinforces the policy that we have in place and a practice that's in place for the sewer and water service areas. And again, it reinforces the role of the Sanitation Authority. There are indeed details associated, important details with water supply and wastewater in that area, that obviously they can't happen unless they happen to the satisfaction of the Sanitation Authority. And conversely, that would be to the satisfaction of the Board of Supervisors as they've expressly authorized them to be the entity in charge of that.
I guess I'd just feel a little better if we at least had a comment from the Sanitation Authority saying, yeah, we can figure it out. We can do it in some manner, or any comment from it.
That was going to be my question. I mean, we're looking at adding 411 acres to the swazza, and it was my understanding the last couple of years that the Sewer and Water, the Sanitation Authority doesn't exactly have a overabundance of capacity. And, you know, 411 acres, I understand this isn't a rezoning, so nobody's going to be developing it, but this would give them the expectation, the owners certainly, that sometime in the future a rezoning would be submitted and, you know, request to have sewer and water service in these areas, and we don't even know what kind of quantities of water we're talking about. Sanitation Authority hasn't even come on board and said, yeah, we can or no, we can't. So I guess I'm a little puzzled. It seems to me like we're putting the cart in front of the horse a little too far, maybe.
It's an excellent point. I think in both of these situations, it was recognized that the town of Middletown and the city of Winchester threw water on the north, but through their agreements with the town of Middletown had a very big role to play to providing water and sewer service in these areas. And I don't doubt that that would be part of the solution, that this does, you know, bring the Sanitation Authority, if you will, involved to a greater extent. And 311 acres for sure is a significant area, especially in the location in which it's at. But those issues would certainly have to be addressed before we do receive anything that would implement this, with, of course, the two very clear exceptions, and that's the recognition that we do have two properties in that area that are currently zoned, a small portion of them, if you will, commercially. So by designating it as a sewer and water service area boundary, that provides the policy approval for water and sewer. The zoning is the next thing that would implement that, and in some cases, there's a little bit of zoning already in place. But for the vast majority of the 311 acres, there are significant steps to go through to enable the development to happen, and those questions would have to be answered. An agreement's roles and responsibilities worked out.
I have, I have a question, Mike. Again, it's the text that says an approach that includes fewer properties may be more acceptable following the review of this proposal. What did you mean by that?
Again, the Board of Supervisors received a request from those two properties, property owners, which include, included a number of properties, and they were separate from each other. So for the simple way of approaching it, we grouped those properties together with all of them contained within the, within the Reliance Road Study Area. So that was advertised, and that's part of the proposal. What we're in essence saying is that may not be what the Board of Supervisor or Planning Commission ultimately wants to do, and we could look at a smaller area if necessary, a more contiguous, certainly would have to be contiguous, but it may be a smaller area to what's identified on the Reliance Road Study.
Or even phasing?
Absolutely.
All righty. Anybody else have a question?
I have just.
Just another comment. Sitting here listening to this, it seems like we're voting on something that we don't even know where we're getting it at. We're voting on water and sewer going down through there. We don't know the sanitation department will take it over. We don't know where we're getting the water out. I know we're not now. We're getting it from Middletown, I mean, from the city, but the board wants Frederick County Sanitation to take it over, and we're going to vote on this. And I like the idea. It's just the fact that I don't understand why we're voting on, to be honest with you.
Mr. Oates?
Just so I'm 100% clear, if the Sanitation Authority has to do this, and say it's 40 years before they can ever get service down there, if they can't work out some type of agreement with Middletown or the city of Winchester, then all these property owners are on hold for that 40 years. They have no ability to go to Middletown or Winchester on their own to get water and sewer, correct?
That would be correct. There's an existing operation, of course, that, one business that is currently on connection to the town of Middletown, and for that, the scope of what they're doing presently, they would be able to continue with that connection. But any future expansion, if this plan is approved, would have to be through the sanitation, with the approval of the Sanitation Authority.
This would allow anybody that wanted to develop this, if we put it inside the swazza, it would then allow them to provide proffers to connect to the Sanitation Authority lines and, as long as they had approvals from the Sanitation Authority, so that if the developer wanted to pay for the extension of lines, extension of water service, as long as the Sanitation Authority had the capacity to do that, then this would allow the developers to pay for the connection. Is that correct?
Definitely. The implementation of the land use plans, transportation, sewer and water infrastructure, land uses, the responsibility of the developer.
That's a good point. I guess if they all want to go together.
Pay for it.
Spend several millions of dollars to bring it down 81.
Depends how bad they want to develop it.
I think it should be more than what the plan's worth.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to us regarding this change to the comp plan? Anyone? Well, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing.
This is in my district, but if a motion were made to wait a little bit, that we got a comment from the Sanitation Authority, it wouldn't hurt my feelings.
Second there.
Oh, that was a motion. Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
It's a comment.
Would it be appropriate, considering that motion, if a motion was made, that we recommend approval contingent on getting a positive recognition from the Sanitation Authority that they at least acknowledge and are willing to provide it?
But Roger, that's impossible. We don't have lines down there. That literally is impossible.
Well, it is possible if the developers build them, and the Sanitation Authority oversees the construction and all that. I mean, it's a lot of money for a developer, but it's possible with money, as long as it's not our money.
I also think that the opportunity for the Sanitation Authority to identify the source of water and how much capacity they can provide there.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion?
Not in my district. I'll yield to Opecan.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Sir.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval contingent upon Sanitation Authority providing a recognition that they're on the hook to provide sewer and water service with comments on how they could or would, or the timing they could provide service to this area in the future.
It's the second. So the recommendation is to recommend approval providing that the Sanitation Authority is, is providing recognition of the need and how the service could be provided, and what would be the timing in order to do it for the whole area?
Yes.
Okay.
If they run a line down, they got to run it down for the whole area and not just a little.
Okay, Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogie, yes.
Manu, yes.
Crockett, yes.
Oates, no.
Thomas, yes.
Kenny, no.
Shepherd, no.
Don Lap, yes.
Moon, no.
And the chair votes no. May I have a calculation on the vote? Okay, we have seven yeses and one, two, three, four, five noes. All right, so the motion carries. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on August the 13th. Our next item is also a public hearing item. It's rezoning 01-14 Copperwood, FEMA, submitted by Greenway Engineering to rezone 1.24 acres of 18.34 acre property from RA Rural Area District to B2 Business General District with proffers. The balance of the property is to remain, is to remain 16.53 acres M1 Light Industrial and .57 Rural Areas District. The property is located on the west side of Martinsburg Pike 11 North and is located approximately six tenths of a mile north of the Interstate 81 exit 317. Exit 317 is identified by property identification number 43-a-111 in the Stonewall Magisterial District. Mr. Ruddy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Moving from the comprehensive plan side of things to an actual rezoning, even though this is a very small and simple one here tonight, as you said, it's a request to rezone just 1.24 acres of an overall 18 acre parcel. And of course, this parcel is home to, to the FEMA headquarters here in Frederick County. On the screen to your left is the location map, where of course, this is Route 11 in this area. The main access to the facility is in this location through the Rutherford Farm Project, the secondary access from this point. The area in which the rezoning is being requested is, of course, that small area right there. Generally, the purpose behind this request, I'm sure the applicant can talk to a little bit more when he gets up and answers any questions the commission may have, is simply to allow some land subdivision and boundary line adjustment law consolidations to occur. The rezoning request is consistent with the land use plan for a commercial land use designation. And of course, you'll see from the proffer statement, it is completely limited to the existing residential use there. No additional access, points on Route 11, and no real development opportunity. Thus, the impacts are, don't exist at this point. A future rezoning adjacent properties and a proffer condition change to this one would obviously enable more development to occur in the future. But the impacts associated with this request don't really exist because it is such a limited by proffer request. The impacts, again, proffer restrictions limit them, the commercial land uses consistent with the Northeast Land Use Plan, and ultimately we're seeking your recommendation onto the Board of Supervisors here on this rezoning application. Relatively straightforward request, as I noted, and I think the rezoning plant that is on the screen there to your left and part of your agenda, again, clarifies the actual location within the parcel that the rezoning is being requested. If the commission has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. Mr. Evan Wyatt with Greenway Engineering is here representing the applicant tonight.
Any questions of Mr. Ruddy? Mr. Thomas?
This one puzzles me a little bit. So we're going to have a residential area on a commercial property. Do we have many residential areas on commercial properties, or residence, not a residential area, residence on commercial property?
We do have a few, and especially as rezonings have happened in more recent years in anticipation of future commercial development, there's certainly, that's occurred in many locations, and it certainly allows continued use of the property until such time that commercial mass or the development actually occurs, whether it's Route 50 west of town and other areas. So there are places where existing residences do exist on commercial, commercial property.
But the way I read the proffer, right now, it's rezoned commercial. The only activity they can do on there is a residence.
That's correct. I think partly it's recognizing that we have a variety of small residential, existing residential lots up and down Route 11 in that location, and over time, their future land use, of course, is identified as commercial. So over time, they are going to turn to that commercial designation and have a mass that's sufficient enough to support an actual commercial project of substance. It will take us a while to get there. You know, in the meantime, this would enable certain land use actions to occur.
With a residence on a commercial designation, designated plot of land, even though the proffer says residence, are there any by right commercial uses that they would be able to do on that property? Home business?
Home occupation, you could, they could certainly do.
Now, they couldn't do a conditional use permit because it's a commercial site.
That's correct. Cottage occupation, therefore, would be limited to, be a home occupation.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Some existing dwelling?
Yes, sir.
It's not that uncommon. We, it's down on Route 50 West, right there beside Walmart. We've got the same thing.
I think it was Botanical Square was one rezoning that jumps to mind. Thank you.
Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Evan Wyatt with Greenway. Roger, I'll try to help you because it can be a little confusing. But when I was putting my information together for this actual rezoning, I pulled out my old folder, and those of you that have been on the commission a while may recall back in 2006 that we actually came forward with a request for a waiver for the minimum acreage size in the Rural Area District to create a 1.24 acre parcel off of this. And the purpose of that was to allow for the, for the residence to be subdivided off of what FEMA obviously does not need for the balance of the property. The history actually goes back a little bit further. When the rezoning actually occurred, which set forth the FEMA project, the property owners had a agreement in principle with FEMA that if they could achieve access to, or the ability to get the residential property severed from the 18 acres, they would do so. So back in 2006, the conduit we tried to achieve to do that was to get a waiver exception for the minimum lot size in the RA District, and then to be able to subdivide the property in that regard. I don't exactly remember what the recommendation of the commission was, but I do remember what the board said, which was, we would prefer you come back later with a rezoning and do it in that fashion. Okay? So that was 2006, and then I think from 2008 until probably about a year ago, we all got lost in the recession, so nothing really happened. But we were approached to come back in and to zone the property because whether the property is zoned RP or B2. property is zoned RP or B2, the minimum lot size would not be an issue, and therefore, we would be able to subdivide the property. Okay? So when we first met with staff, we did ask them the question, "Would RP be the appropriate zoning district?" And they pointed us to the comprehensive plan that's been adopted for this area of the county, which does call for the properties along the front edge of Route 11 to be commercially zoned over time. And so we said, "Okay." And so the request is for B2 zoning, and the idea is that this parcel right here is being zoned B2 today. The other arrangement that the property owners in Copperwood had was that because this access drive serves primarily for service delivery and for emergency access for FEMA, FEMA did not want that loaded with commercial traffic in the future. Okay? So the idea was, we would go ahead today, get this zone so this property could be subdivided off on B2. We would restrict the proffers to say, "Everything that exists today is all that it's going to be, even though the zoning is going to change." And then over time, work to try to obtain the Riddick parcel next door. That would create about a four acre land bay. You would be able to get entrance spacing. You could reset the plan, if you will, at that point in time. So that's kind of why we're here tonight. It's like step one of a multi-step process. So what would happen would be in the future, if Riddick did come into play and it was rezoned, we would combine it with this 1.24 acres, change the proffers, and at that point in time, that would be the project you would be considering. So, does that help?
Makes sense.
Okay, thank you. So once again, as Mike said, it's pretty basic right now, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Did I not? This is a public hearing. I've been advised. So if anyone would like to speak regarding this item, we would like to hear your comments. Yes, come up and give us your name and Magisterial District, please.
My name is Maxine Bibbin. I am a neighbor of this property, and that would be in the Stonewall District. I am a little surprised to hear that a rezon is requested for a property, and the applicants are stating no impact and no change. What I see is business rezoning, and that gives the property owners the ability to put a business there. And I would question why this would be of any benefit to the neighborhood. It is a nice northern approach to the city, and there is, Rutherford Crossing is a large business district, less than a quarter of a mile away, and it is not built out yet. And I see no reason at this time to give a rezoning of business to a property, and then, to me, it's disingenuous to say, "We're going to rezone this to business, but it'll have no impact. We're not putting a business there." I see no sense in that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to us? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. This is in the Stonewall District. Are there any comments about the big plan or the current one?
Madam Chairman, I recommend approval of the rezoning application 01-14 Copperwood at FEMA.
There is second?
Second.
Any other comments? Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Bowden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Crockett, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This also goes to the Board of Supervisors on the 13th of August. The next two items are information discussion item, and my understanding, Mrs. Perkins-
I'm going to do both items at the same time.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself from both of these items.
Thank you. The first item is a waiver request for Shenandoah Development, and it's a request to waive the public road requirement and allow Shenandoah Development to utilize private roads, and that is an action that we will take. The second part of this is simply information. It's the master development plan, and as it's written, it is written with public roads in it because we have not, if you will, processed the waiver, so.
And just to give an overview, I'll actually talk about the master plan first, just to give a general overview of the development, and then I'll go right into the waiver, which is the action item. So the Lake Frederick Master Development Plan is a proposal to develop 926 acres of land, zone R5 Residential Recreational Community with a total of 2,130 units. Now, this does include the 253 existing platted lots. Now, the development was originally zoned back in 1975, and was master planned in '91, revised in 2001, 2007, and the most recent was a 2013 revision. Now, access to this development is via existing entrance on Route 522, which is called Lake Frederick Drive. And this is the overall, the locator map for the property. The brown is the development with the lake in the center. Now, the revision before you is a revision to the 2013 Shenandoah Master Plan, which is now called Lake Frederick. The changes include removing the commercial pod that was located in Phase 1B, removing a road connection, and adding lots in Phase 2A, as well as addition of a model court in Phase 1A. You can see here, kind of the hatched area is where the commercial pod is being removed. Then, in this area here, we have a road connection that was taken out. Then, in this area, we have the model court. So I would note that these changes do not impact the overall lot numbers that were approved with the previous master plan. The acreage and the lot numbers are still the same. So the master plan for Lake Frederick is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, and that item is presented as an informational item. Now, the action item, which is the waiver, staff is in receipt of a waiver request from Lawson and Silic on behalf of Lansdowne Development Group to waive the public street requirements within Lake Frederick or Shenandoah. Now, the applicant is requesting that the public streets be waived to allow the development to be constructed with a complete network of private streets and to have a gated access. Now, you may recall that there was a text amendment recently discussed, and public hearings were held for the ordinance amendment in the R5, and the Board of Supervisors did approve that at their last meeting. So now the applicant has the ability to request the waiver. And I would note that I placed a copy of the approved text at your seats, just so everyone has a copy of what was actually approved by the Board of Supervisors, and it is what was recommended by the Planning Commission. So in your agenda, the applicant did provide road details for the proposed private streets, and this is the same schematic that was included in your agendas. So tonight, we are seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors on the proposed waiver request for private streets within the Lake Frederick Development. I'd be glad to answer any questions. And Mr. Ty Lawson is here on behalf of the application, should you have any questions.
Any questions of Mrs. Perkins?
Yeah.
We've got one down here.
I assume the only way to get to the commercial land is through the private streets?
The white area is the only commercial pod that's left, which is held under separate ownership, if you may remember, it was severed, and it has access to the existing Lake Frederick Drive that was constructed a number of years ago.
Okay.
Candace, one of the previous site plans, I guess it might have been a few years ago, but didn't one of them have a fire station set aside, planned?
There was a note on a very old master plan. However, it was only a note, it was never a proffer, so it was removed with the 2013 plan.
So no more fire station? Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, unfortunately, I was here then, and the understanding when we talked this back in 2002, 2003, was that there was going to be a fire station here, and it was probably our mistake that we didn't formalize it into some kind of a proffer. At this point, you can't enforce it, I understand that, since it was never proffered, but that's an unfortunate occurrence, because it started off originally as a school site, and then everybody kind of backed down on that and said, "Well, you know, we don't need a school site there, but it will be nice because if it's an age-restricted community, sometimes there tends to be more emergency calls and locations. It'd be a good location for a fireside. It'd be nice if the developer would come back out and proffer, since we're looking at taking a commercial area out and some other things for the developer, it would be nice if they would come back online as a gesture and just offer a nice, let's see, site there." But that's outside of the record, I guess. That's all, thank you.
I don't think the residents might have an rescue squad close by, a fire station close by, but yeah, give and take, I guess, it's up to the developer and the board to work out something.
All righty, this is a waiver that we have to deal with now that we understand about the master development plan.
So is it one motion for both?
No. We don't need to deal with the master development, it's just the waiver for the-
Need a recommendation on the waiver.
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the waiver.
For the public streets?
Or public streets, yeah. What was the number? I wonder, I can't get to the right one.
That's all right.
Request to waive the public road requirement. Oh, there isn't a number, okay.
Second. Whatever you said.
Yeah.
This is Sam, Mrs. Perkins. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Dunlap, would you like to vote?
Dunlap, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Bowden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Crockett, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the board also on August the 13th. We've come to the end of our agenda. Does anyone on the commission have any thoughts?
Yes, I'm very impressed with Mr. Thomas's memory. How does he do that from 12 years ago?
Two years, it's great. So, I, Mr.-
It was a big discussion.
The, our August the 6th meeting, we do not have an agenda for it, so we will need to cancel that.
Move again for a second.
All favor? All opposed? Thank you all. We need to adjourn.
Commitment, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you again.